Because students like me and others, every week, we're in the city, we're in the city. We're in Exante, we're working with Exante, we're helping people, we're trying to bridge the gap between the community. And so, I wanted to discredit that. Also, I wanted to discredit what you talked about. My bad. So also, I wanted to speak on how you're also being disrespectful to the students. You're allowing students to live in poor conditions in the Panther Hills. You're moving slow. You constantly say that you're forgetting documents. You constantly say you're so busy every time the council members ask you questions about anything about the Panther Hill apartments. And I just wanted to say how I feel that you are unfit to be our mayor, and I hope that you enjoy the rest of your term.
All I had to think of was the Fifteenth Amendment. All I thought was the Fifteenth Amendment when I found out about the letter that you wrote to our university. Majority of the Prairie View can't see, they work for our school, everyone in the community is together as a family. Kendrick, Exante, the rest of the city councilmen, they work for this community and they help everyone out. The letter you wrote, that's a backlash to the university and all the people in this room. And for me, you know, that you a votey vote, a votey vote, something that's like a value, that's a value to everybody who's a minority. Majority, majority of everybody is a minority in this nation. And you move something that is very valuable to us, very, very valuable. And that's all I'm gonna say. And I'm just saying, we're not done yet.
Hey, once again, good evening, good evening, Mayor Allen. Glad to see you here this evening. Um, so to, basically, I spoke on last meeting about your letter to Trey Duhon. And as you can see here, all these students are here, dressed nice. Uh, Chief Lopez came in and asked people to move, and what did they do? They moved. So I don't see the disrespect. And I don't see the manner of dress that you were talking about. So in terms of voting, how do you expect people to vote for you when you discredit everything that they stand on? Prairie View is known for their professional dress Tuesdays. Even though it's not Tuesday, look at the professional dress. We learned that from Prairie View. And some of the citizens that live in the city work at Prairie View and taught us these things. So how dare you write in that letter that these students that sit in here, along with the ones that couldn't make it, do those things? I don't understand. How do you expect them to vote for you? Especially like this young man just said, you have spent over two years ignoring me. I came up here and poured my heart out. How do you expect me, somebody that grew up with your son, played with him, how do you expect me to vote for you again? I've lost all respect, all of it, based on these last two years. That's all it took. And all it takes for anyone to see if they want to vote for you again, or anybody up here, it just takes one time. And that's all I'm gonna say.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for allowing me to come forward and speak today. Like he said, the first thing that came to my mind when I saw that letter was the Fifteenth Amendment. One of the most basic, essential, essential rights in this world is the right to suffrage. The Fifteenth Amendment of United States Constitution states, "The right of citizens of the United States of America to vote shall not be denied or abridged by the United States government or any state on account of race, color, or previous condition of servitude." Yet as we all know, that even though these laws were put in place to protect the black vote, we would not receive our actual Voting Rights Decades letters when the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five was passed. Because of the work of people like President Lyndon Baines Johnson, the Civil Rights Movement, the Black Power Movement, and his latest, Dr. Martin Luther King, and Malcolm X. Now today, lawmakers have found new ways to disenfranchise the black electorate by discounting our votes, removing polling locations, and making access to the polls limited to those who keep them in power. And to bring things closer to home, in nineteen seventy-two, Prairie View students, the students that you said you were part of in the last meeting, were denied the cast, the right, the right to vote in the presidential elections of Nixon versus McGovern. A court battle ensued, went to United States Supreme Court for a resolution. After the court battle, the Walla County Texas Census Office was found guilty of, of practicing, requiring the students to seek the right to vote whether, whether they were bona fide resident or not. All the students were required to complete this form. The plaintiffs were successful and provided the county's actions were a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment, equal protection clause, and the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. In nineteen seventy-nine, the final, uh, Walla County's final appeal was denied, and the students in Walla County were finally entitled to the right to vote. Mr. Mayor, black student activism at your beloved alma mater, uh, uh, hold on, let me, hold on. Alright, now, Mr. Mayor, black student activism at your beloved alma mater, and our beloved institution is the reason that students across the country can vote today. Those students held the key to unlocking and dispelling a generation of black, young suppressed votes. The key to elected people and officers who looked like us, cared about us, and wanted to see our community succeed. In the nineties, the PB nineteen marched because charges were brought up against them by the Walla County District Attorney's Office of Persian illegal voting. And in two thousand and four, over seven hundred voter registration cards were left unprocessed in the Walla County Election Office. Again, in two thousand and eight, students marched to the Walla County Courthouse to protest the fact that they only had one early voting location on campus in the Walla County area, and that's the same reason that we are here today. In two thousand and twelve, former SGA president, Priscilla Barber, fought for students to have the right to vote, and because of her work, we were able to vote for the first time on campus in two thousand and sixteen. With all that said on the history of voting in the city here at Prairie View, why does it seem like you have dedicated your term to the division and disenfranchising of the student vote? Your intentional separation distinction casts a deep divide between the student body and the citizen voter body. Statements like "I, along with the property taxpaying citizens of Prairie View," or "we, the city of Prairie View officials and the seasoned citizens," display how you generally, generally feel about the student electorate. Mr. Mayor, the largest voting block in the city of Prairie View resides within the confines of Prairie View and the university. And the reality of the situation is that if early voting locations are not, they're not your fault that they're not there. It's not the county's fault. It's because of state legislations that put racist and discriminatory laws in place to discount the black vote. But where you went wrong is when you betrayed the voter electorate that got you into that seat. We, the tax, the, the sales taxpaying citizens of Prairie View, not appreciate your actions. Student voting is nowhere as near as active as it used to be or should be. However, moving the polling location from the MSC to the community center will make it harder for students to vote. Students who live on campus don't want to drive, don't want to walk to class, let alone walk almost a mile to go vote. If the city of Prairie View felt so strongly about coming to campus to vote, or a city, a city where most of these people live here, have worked here, graduated from here, why didn't you fight for a separate place for the students to vote and for the residents to vote? When you were up against trouble, you didn't meet the squares face to face. You didn't leave the city and the students in a unified fight against whoever went against our disenfranchisement. You didn't leave them whether it be administration or the county. You did not stand up for the largest voting block in this county. The voting block that you promised affordable and upscale residents should housing to, going to win an election. The voting block that you stood in front of the MSC with, taking pictures for, voting in front of the Panther Way. The voting block that you jumped into a pool with. That same voting block needed you to stand up for us, to be the leader that Prairie View has seen before, to fight the good fight, hand in hand with those who desperately desire to change. We needed you, and you could not deliver. At the end of the day, Mayor Allen, what I'm most upset about is the lack of the fight you have had for your student constituency. Regardless of your thoughts, opinions, or feelings towards us, we have the same voting rights as young sales taxpaying citizens, as the seasoned property taxpaying citizens in this city. And come your election day, we're gonna show you just how vital voting block three oh nine is.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the council and Mayor Allen for finally showing up. Um, Kenneth Blanchard once said, "The key to successful leadership is influence, not authority." This quote is relevant to all, but screams in the liking of our very own city council and you, Mayor Allen, respectively. The head of the governing body, Mayor Allen, has been heavily problematic this term, and of course, good and bad begins at the top. The bickering back and forth and belittling of council members and vice versa is simply unacceptable in the professional sense and secondhandly embarrassing as a citizen and as a student. Furthermore, the issues that are presented make it hard to believe that any work that is to be done can actually be done due to the constant disagreements. As I'm sure the council has heard enough about themselves from you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to point the finger at you, Mr. Mayor, a finger that has been pointed by you many of times. Mayor Allen, we respect the fact that you are intelligent and business minded, but you have created more division than unity between the university and the Prairie View community, especially the student body. Now, being that students are the pillar of this community, your concern for students does not exist until it's time to campaign for reelection. You, in turn, are building coalitions that undermine the plight of the student body, which is disingenuous to a community that has housed, a community that has housed Prairie View A&amp;M University since eighteen seventy-six. As a father and a human, how dare you put the lives of young adults and students at risk for another term because of the poor decisions you have made in regards to Panther Mill Apartments, if that's what you want to call them? In fact, it's a wonder to me how one can sleep well at night knowing that others are sleeping in both desperation and worry simply because housing options are limited. From the jumping in the pool at Panther Hill to garner votes, to offering money to whichever student could twerk the best for votes at spring twenty eighteen caravan, these forms of solicitation are vile and unacceptable. I know you didn't because I was there. And don't even get me started on these letters that you wrote. Very immature, similar to a spoiled child trying to prove a point because he or she could not give their way. Needless to say, it sounds to me, Mr. Mayor, that there's some deep insecurity issues within you as it relates to authority and ages, which is evident. And in not being productive, I am embarrassed to know that you are an alumnus of our university, our beloved institution that produces productive people. Hopefully, you will find that productivity once you are out of office. Hopefully, that will be come May twenty, twenty twenty. Meanwhile, I will continue to hope that you will never find your way back in a position of representation until you, sir, learn how to take accountability. Thank you.
Hi, so I specifically want to address you, Mayor Allen, because the letter that you wrote to Trey Duhon on January tenth, twenty twenty, the first sentence you said "I" and the property taxpaying citizens was very condescending, and also a slap in the face to the students because, one, we're residents of Prairie View. All of us say Prairie View when we sending, or receiving mail, and that's a slap in the face. Because you come to our campus and want us to vote for you and put you back in office, but in fact, somebody said they saw you today on campus when you wrote in the letter that you don't like to come to campus, or students don't, or seasoned residents don't like to come to campus because we're so disrespectful, we don't know how to dress. But again, I'm gonna say, you know, I think we're dressed pretty nicely today professionally. Usually, I, anytime I go in MSC, I usually see a lot of professionally dressed students as well. Um, my cousin is Ashley Jackson, and you constantly ignore the fact that her dad fell down the steps at Panther Hill, and yet, I want to know what's also being done about that in Panther Hill, because also, have you closed the pool yet? No? Okay. Um, so yeah, that's really what I had to say, because also, I want you to I, I know, that's fine. I'm not, I'm not asking for you to respond, but I'm talking right now. So what I'm saying is, enjoy the rest of your term, because May twenty twenty, that's a wrap.
Joe Dart. All I have to say is, uh, you know, the students vote. It's a very, very, very powerful vote in, uh, the city of Prairie View. And, um, I don't see how you can disrespect the people that you want to vote for you and then expecting to vote for you again. Um, enjoy the rest of your term and, uh,
Uh, good evening, Council. Uh, good evening, citizens of Prairie View.
Good evening.
And Prairie View, the city of Prairie View. How y'all doing? Um, I wrote a little something for Mr. Mayor. I am speaking as a concerned citizen. You can disrespect your peers, you can disrespect former and current city officials, you can disrespect and ignore Ms. Ashley Jackson and Ms. Isis Collins, and whomever, whoever else you choose, but we, the students of Prairie View A&amp;M University, refuse to accept it. We have put up with your nonsense for way too long. And, uh, but on the bright side, and very bright side, those days have come to an end. Um, that's all I'm gonna say on that, because we all know May twenty twenty is coming real soon. But, on another note, um, I heard that election season is upon us, and, um, I wanted to let you know that, uh, keep disrespecting the students. Keep disrespecting as soon as you go on to, man. And you will see the true power that the students hold. Best believe we're not done yet.
Good afternoon, Mayor Allen and Council of Prairie View, fellow Prairie View citizens and students. Glad to see you today. Um, I would like to speak to you all not only as a Prairie, Prairie View A&amp;M student, but also as a citizen, um, a helper of the city as well. Most of my, uh, citizen work has been through, uh, Protect the Village with Exante Wallace. And, um, I'd just like to say personally, I have experienced citizens explaining their concerns with the city and themselves, um, not with the students. So I feel like Mayor Allen's excuse of students being the reason why, um, I'm sorry, I'm nervous right now. Excuses for citizens not coming on to campus to vote is just plain madness. Um, and I'm saying that because I have heard them specifically say to me that it is nothing that the students can do about it, it is nothing that, um, faculty can do about it, or the school itself, it is all about the city. And they haven't been getting any type of publications of where or how to go vote on campus. They feel like they're not welcome, not because of the students. I've personally heard this, so I feel like more needs to be done through the city than the students. Students have been doing their part. We, we dress right. We're respectful when need be. And, you know, I mean, you know, students are students. They've been there before as well, so I feel like there should be some type of understanding. And for you to sit there and say that we as students don't respect our elders, don't dress correctly, and are always using profanity is just not right. We are black students, we're getting our education that is the campus for us to be on, that we open up to the community as well, so it shouldn't be a reason for students to be blamed for not allowing the citizens to come vote. Okay, I'm a little nervous, I'm gonna stick out now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the show. Uh, Prairie View A&amp;M University students have fought against voter suppression for over fifty years, and over the years, we continue to face opposition from people who don't look like us. Now in twenty twenty, we face even more. However, not only are we still fighting the fight against those who look, who don't look like us, we're now having to fight against people who look like us and attended our university. Instead of bringing the community together, the community and university together, you chose to divide us, even as the leader of the community. You created animosity between the students and the citizens. You have disrespected us, manipulated us, lied to us, and shown us you do not consider us to be on an equal level as the rest of the community. So we have gathered here today to show you that we will no longer tolerate your blatant disregard towards the students of Prairie View A&amp;M University. Just as you made the decision to run for office as Mayor of Prairie View, we have made the decision to attend the university once that you attended. That said, we will continue to exercise our right and speak out against anything that does not promote positivity and unity at our university, at our university, for our university. Thank you.
Oh, no, she doesn't want to speak.
First of all, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Cozy Raw, and, uh, I'm a freshman at Prairie View A&amp;M University. I would like to acknowledge the fact that this is my first time ever speaking at a city council meeting of any sort. And I would also like to acknowledge that while I haven't spent a lot of time in the city of Prairie View, all the experience is just in this first semester, we're trying to get the right to vote, is completely ridiculous, just, just to be frank. I'm just an newly acquainted citizen of this wonderful city and campus. And even so, I recognize that the students are the lifeblood of this whole city. Because we truly have the power, all of the power that, to put you in office in the first place it took all of us in order for you to be able to have the seat that you have right now. And just like, we've been fighting for the right to vote since the nineties, and we've been fighting for our right to be, just to be able to live here for hundreds of years. This city used to be a plantation for people like us. And the fact that you're trying to restrict our right to vote is so disrespectful, just, I, I really can't understand it. Like, why has this been happening when we are citizens of Prairie View? Why must we go through this non-cyclical process just to find a place to vote when nobody else on any other college campus actually has to do that? Because on numerous other college campuses, they have a place where they're able to vote, where the students are able to vote. It is our right as citizens to have the right to vote, and just the fact that we had to struggle this much, all in order to be able to do something that's been guaranteed to us, is utterly ridiculous. And quite frankly, sir, I hope you evaluated your decision to relocate the voting site, and I just want you to know, we're going to keep fighting, we're going to keep on struggling tooth and nail until we have the right to vote on campus. Thank you.
Um, I'm also a freshman at PBAM, and also, I just wanted to say that I think it's pretty messed up and pretty disrespectful that you're not allowing us to vote on our campus and having voting booths on our campus, because it's really, there's people on our campus that are registered to vote, and sometimes they won't be able to go out to make sure that they're able to go vote, and for those voting booths, booths to be on campus to be accessible and be very useful for us and be mainly helpful for us. And also, just like, I also read the letter as to what you were saying to us individuals here at PBAMU, and I just think it's like very disrespectful, because there's individuals, there's us that we go out, we do stuff for the community, we give out, we do community surveys, and like, we really build up and help out the community. And just like things that you were saying, is just blatantly like disrespectful and a slap to the face. You're like mainly degrading us and like saying something that we're not, like, we're students, we're African-American students. And, um, I just think that's really disrespectful, and also just mainly a first impression of yourself, I think it's just like very, it's just not really good of a taste, it's just distasteful. Thank you. Just as a first impression of myself.
Good evening, everyone. So I as well would like to address the mayor, um, on the letter that you wrote about my peers and myself on January third of twenty twenty. And starting at line fourteen, um, in your letter, you speak on residents not wanting to come to the university due to the way that we speak and dress. And just as Jessman and other people addressed, you were there today eating in our cafeteria. So if you believe what your citizens are saying about our university, why do you continue to show up and eat with us? Um, why did you manipulate us into voting for you only to turn around and discredit us? And if the outfits were okay when you offered up that twenty dollars, if it changed, I would like a written response to those questions. Thank you.
She doesn't want to speak.
Kenesha Tewey.
Hello, everyone. So, um, I'm gonna be addressing the mayor. Um, as a student of PBAM, you know, I'm really disappointed in your choice of words to describe us. We have helped you during your campaign, we have supported your now broken promises, and you owe us, the whole entire PBAM, the student body, an apology for how you slandered us in your letter to the judge. In addition to this apology for putting students out, and an additional, uh, addition, additional apology to, uh, the students at Panther Hill Apartments for their safety risks, so, yes. Enjoy your term.
Isis Collins.
What's going on? Uh, Mayor Allen, nice to see you. Um, I, I don't, I had a lot to say, something to say, but everybody's pretty much said it. I just want to say I'm so happy. I don't think nobody's seen a smile like this on my face. I'm so happy that you guys came. It's a beautiful thing to see students fighting for what they deserve and what we've been deserving, not only just now, but in the nineties, when some of our parents were probably here, and our older aunties were here and et cetera. Like, this is what this is about. It's about making a difference and using our voices to actually make a difference and, you know, see change in our community. Um, just as far as, you know, you see me all the time, so you know how I feel, but I just, I just don't understand as like, you being a black man and probably a black brother, uh, probably, I'm sure you are a black father, uh, a black husband, why you would say such things about black students at your, the university that you graduated from? Why would you speak about us, about us in that way and add on to the stigma that this racist county already has against us? I just don't understand it. Like, do you want them to be against us? We have nothing. Y'all took away the field parties when we can't have fun how we want to. You know, you're canceling parties every, every, you know, every weekend. I mean, we're doing, I mean, what more do you want us to do? So for you to put into that letter and say those things about us, that, that's, that's a clear indication of the division that we've had since you came into office. It's a clear division. When you, when you came into my, and I would never forget this, Mayor Allen, you came into my sociology class, and you, 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 I, I admired your voice. I admired the things that you had to say. I had some type of, it, it made me feel like, okay, I'm in the right place. But today, I don't feel like I'm in the right place. I can't wait to get out of here. And it's unfortunate. I don't want to feel that way, but you made me feel that way. We, I'm living in an apartment complex that's never been inspected. I don't know whether the building gonna crash on my head while I'm asleep. The water stinks. It smells terrible. I mean, we having nineteen hour I mean, we have a nineteen-hour water shut-off, so I mean, dang. What if I didn't have anywhere else to go? What if I didn't have any water bottles? What if I didn't have any of the things that were discussed in the last... I just... You owe everybody an apology, whether it's in letter form, whether you do it on video, Instagram Live, however you prefer. You owe everybody an apology for the way that you spoke about the student body because we supported you since day one. And you still continue to come to our school. I saw you, you saw, we saw each other in MSC, you know? Can't do that. You can't come to where we live and talk junk about us in a letter, then come to where we live and act like it's all kumbaya. That's not how it works. And every student that you walk up to and try to talk his big game to, I'm right behind him telling them, heck, no. And that's all I really say. Enjoy your time, man.
Greetings, Mayor Allen, the council, and to all the residents and property and sales tax citizens of this city. I'm here today to address, I was here last, last meeting, and I spoke on the letter that you originally sent to the council, I mean, to Judge Duhon. I believe that was January third, can't really do exactly, but now I'm addressing the January tenth letter. I'm just really confused to exactly why you thought it was appropriate to not only write one letter. I don't know if you thought one was enough, but to then counter it with another letter was more like a slap in the face, like, oh, this is what my decision is and this time it's gonna be done. So with that being said, we are here today as not only students, but as citizens, as voting citizens, as in fulfilling here our constitutional duty to be able to speak power to the actions that our elected representation of this city has failed to speak on behalf of us to Judge Duhon. Mr. Mayor, you are, yes, the mayor of this city as well as the tax property paying cities of Prairie View, but you're also the mayor of the students of Prairie View A&amp;M University. And so together, that makes up the city of Prairie View. It cannot be the city of Prairie View with just the citizens, and it cannot be the city of Prairie View with just the students. We are one, and you let the county divide us, Mr. Mayor, and that's what's most disappointing. And then you turned around and made it to a point where you depended on the students. We're the disrespectful ones. We don't know how to dress. We don't know how to act around the older generation. When the location that was being proposed to vote was the Welcome Center, a brand-new building on our campus that isn't even open to the general population of the students.